Thank you Commissioner Kraski. All right, on to administrative business. Approval of the Order of Agenda. Commissioner Gordon.
I move that we approve the Order of Agenda.
Commissioner Clifford.
I'll second that.
Had a motion, second please vote. That passes unanimously. Approval of the minutes for our January 22, 2019 meeting. Let's see, Commissioner Clifford.
I move to approve the minutes of January 22, 2019.
Commissioner Gordon.
Second.
All right, we've had a motion, second please vote. And that passes unanimously, thank you. Let's see, we don't need a designation of a liaison to the next city council meeting, so on to oral communications. This portion of the agenda is available to the public to address the Planning Commission on any issue within the subject matter jurisdiction of the commission that is not on the agenda tonight. The time allowed for any speaker would be three minutes. If anyone wishes to speak on something not on the agenda, they'd fill out the card in the back and give it to staff. I don't see any cards up here, I don't see any movement, so I'm going to close this portion of the agenda, move on to consent items, there are none, so now continued public hearings. First public hearing will be for site development permit and coastal development permit, use permit and tentative subdivision map for the construction of a three-story, two-unit residential condominium duplex on a 4,726 square foot vacant lot at 2105 Beach Boulevard. Recommended action tonight is to approve as conditioned. Staff report please.
Good evening Commissioners. So the proposed project is a continued item from the January 7, 2019 Planning Commission hearing. The proposed project is a three-story, two-unit residential condominium duplex on a 4,726-foot lot that is zoned R3, which is multiple-family residential and has been vacant for 18 years. As staff outlined in the January 7 staff report, staff concluded that the 2016 Moffett and Nichol geotechnical report prepared for the nearby 2212 Beach Boulevard project would apply to the subject property as it pertains to potential coastal hazards. However, after receiving public comment and deliberating, the Planning Commission requested that staff obtain the opinion of a qualified professional engineer in order to confirm the applicability of the report to the 2105 Beach Boulevard project. Staff contacted Moffett and Nichol on the matter and while they prepared an informal email to staff solely for informational purposes, they were unable to prepare a formal response in the time allowed by the continuance of this public hearing. Instead, the applicant engaged an engineer from the firm GeoSoils, Inc., and obtained an opinion from registered professional civil engineer David Skelly, included in the staff report as attachment F. The GeoSoils coastal hazard analysis confirms that the 2016 Moffett and Nichol report is directly applicable to the subject site. The analysis also states that the subject site at 2105 Beach Boulevard actually has unique characteristics, which in fact reduce the potential for the subject site to be affected by coastal hazards, such as a higher effective seawall height along the seawalls frontage, the location of the site mostly behind the Pacifica Pier head wall, the concrete wall proposed onsite, and the finished floor elevation being about two feet above potential water ponding elevation. A second informational item identified by the commission was the project soils report. Commissioner Clifford requested to review the soils report prepared by the project's geotechnical engineer. Commissioner Clifford reviewed the soils report at the planning department, and so staff believes this informational request has been satisfied. On the basis of the registered professional engineer's opinion that this 2016 Moffett and Nichol report is applicable to the project site, and on the basis that the interested commissioner has reviewed the soils report, staff believes that the additional information requirements identified by the Planning Commission have been fulfilled. Thus, staff's recommendation remains to approve the project with conditions as indicated in the draft resolution attached to the staff report. And that concludes my presentation, I'm here for any questions.
Great, thank you Helen. Any questions for staff? All right, I don't see any, so at this point, if the applicant wishes to come up, you have 10 minutes to speak and present on your project. Thank you.
Good evening Commissioners, Brian O'Flynn, here to just reinforce that we did hire one of the best geotech engineers who's very familiar with Pacifica, has actually worked for a lot of private parties, including towards the Espinade, the cottages, seaside cottages whatever, by the sea, farther south, and also for the city Pacifica itself, so he's very familiar with all the different structures, the seawalls on both sides of the pier, and had him review the Moffett and Nichol's original report. And he came up and found that our site was actually even better suited than the current site that we're sitting in right now. I felt fortunate to find him and to engage him. I think, I want to just run reinforce how well the project will be built. Again, I overdesigned the building for exactly its coastal position for the future, to last a long, long time, and much more so than would have been required by any regular building that would have gone through the building department. In fact, it was already, had gone through all the different departments and had been approved, it was just that timing didn't work out with the approval for the subdivision improvement agreement, the city didn't get back to us in time. So I'm just going to turn the floor over to architect Alan Martinez.
We were expecting someone from the, from geotech, but they couldn't make it. But, yeah, to reiterate, I think the planning summary kind of hits the main points, that the site, that the seawall is effectively higher at this point, and that any ponding that's going to happen is going to be in the street, and that the first floor level is two feet above that ponding. And that's not even taking into account that the first story is concrete, and is basically designed as kind of a loss if there is a tsunami. So flooding through the first floor will not damage, structurally damage the building because it's all concrete. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, oh, go ahead.
I wanted to reinforce the point that the position of the building is in a very different position than any property north of the pier, as some of the public comment was saying last time, so it's a very, very different animal. And I just hope that those two situations aren't conflated in the analysis. Thank you.
Thank you, okay. Well, any questions for the applicant? Okay, I don't see any at the moment. All right, I'm going to open this up to public hearing. First up would be Stan Zeven, followed by Sia Mozen. Might have got that wrong.
Evening Commissioners. First, I'd like to thank the city for recognizing how dangerous it would be to have people sleeping on the first floor in Beach Boulevard. That's a really good start. And I would also like to thank the commissioners for asking some very good and pointed questions at the last meeting. A quick aside, just this weekend, I read a new study on West Antarctica, the major glacier there, and using new diagnostics, they have discovered a huge hole in this glacier, approximately two-thirds the size of Manhattan Island, and 1,000 feet from top to bottom. All I'm going to say about that is in the eight years I've been watching sea level rise studies, not once have legitimate studies shown that it's slowing down and we're making the wrong choices. They always show that there's more ice melting and it's going to continue in that way. First, I'd like to address the city and ask them if they would be kind enough to put the conclusions of the Moffett and Nichol's report in all these reports, so people know exactly what the choices are. Although the city's intent is to keep the sand nourished and to keep the wall built and strong, the city has no control over how fast sea level will rise, and there's really very questionable thought in terms of whether we can get any kind of grants after we get our first round of grants for the wall and even for the nourishment. So with that in mind, keep in mind that as sea level rises, the groundwater rises, and there is a chance of liquefaction when this happens. So if the foundation is not down to the bedrock, there could be a chance of damage to the building and even worse injury to the people inside. So this seems to be a lose-lose for the city. I don't see anything written that protects the city and the people of Pacifica from future liability problems, although I realize some of the infrastructure maybe can't be legalized, but a lot of the other liabilities can. I would like an explanation, because I haven't seen anything in this one about the geology, about liquefaction or anything of that effect. So I see a lot of chances in the future where this piece of property could cost the people of Pacifica a lot of money, and all we need to do is a few little things, like get the darn, get the darn foundation down and have something in writing that protects us from future liability. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up is Sia Mozen.
Good evening Commissioners, staff. My name is Sia Moazami, I'm a resident, 23 Honocito Avenue, across the street, and just wanted to thank you for your time in reviewing this project. I was here three years ago, I think, or two and a half years ago when the project was originally approved, and supportive of the project then, and supportive of the project now. I think, excuse me my throat, I think, you know, I think, again, I'm not a scientist, but I think sea level rise is, it's, it's a sensitive subject, it's not an exact science. However, I think with this property and Brian O'Flynn's development, you know, I've known Brian for five years, he's, if you drive up and down Beach Boulevard, you know, the most well-maintained properties along Beach Boulevard, I think he may have an ownership in. So I think if you're concerned about long-term, you know, maintenance, longevity of a property, I think, you know, you would be approving a project to a property owner that maintains and takes care of their property. So with that said, you know, I hope the project gets approved, moves forward, it'd be a nice addition to the neighborhood. I think additional density in West Shark Park would help, you know, the future development along Palmetto, which is hopefully going to be a vibrant Main Street for us. I think there's a lot of benefits to getting this project approved and moving forward. And I'm not a geotactical engineer, but, you know, I think if there's sea level rise and there's liquefaction, I, my guess is, you know, his slab would move as well, so. Then again, I'm not an engineer, so thank you for your time, and I'd like to see this project get approved. Thank you.
Thank you. I have one last card up here, it's Eric Bruner.
Commissioner, staff, thank you very much for hearing this tonight. In full support of the project, as I said the last time we were here, Brian's a very thoughtful builder, as you've heard, that he's building a tsunami-proof house, which is probably the only one on Beach Boulevard. So, you know, it's going to last for a very long time, it's going to be a great opportunity for people to come and see just how beautiful Beach Boulevard is and, you know, the potential for Pacifica in the future. Like I said, it'd be great to have a tsunami-built house that I would live in, so like if he is looking to do that, then he's being very thoughtful in the planning, and just hope you guys see that. And I think with the other reports saying that the wall, the seawall is higher, and actually the entire pier kind of protects that property, kind of just sets a little bit of a clear expectation of just how protected that building will be, right? So, thank you.
Thank you. All right, I don't see any further cards up here, so I'm going to close public hearing and bring this back to deliberation. Anyone wish, oh, I'm sorry, yeah, you're right, forgot. Applicant, you can respond to any of the public comments at this point.
Yes, thank you very much. I just want to reiterate that the building, given its exceptional sort of structural integrity, it wasn't designed to not have people on the ground floor, as one of the public comment people said, nor is the building built north of the pier, as it seemed to be alluded to in the first meeting we had. Just want to clear those two items up. And I just hope that you can support the project and you won't be disappointed in the results. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. I don't see any questions, so I will bring this back to the commission for deliberation. Commissioner Clifford.
Well, I do want to state that I did in fact go look at the soils report, and I also looked at the structural plans that we didn't get. We got everything but the structural. And it's going to be an excellent building. It's, I'm convinced that the building itself will survive sea level rise for the foreseeable future. So, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Nebelen.
Well, I just wanted to note that I did have the opportunity to review the GeoSoils report and the rest of the materials submitted, and, you know, I'm convinced on the basis of this report, I think that my fellow commissioners' statements with respect to the soils report, which I don't think myself, I'm technically competent to speak to, but I'm certainly confident of Commissioner Clifford's competency in that area, as well as competency of staff. I'm in support of the project, particularly, I was in support before receiving the supplemental materials at this point, I'm, again, I want to reiterate my support.
Thank you. Commissioner Gordon.
Thank you Chair. I want to thank the applicant for going out and retaining Mr. Skelly, that was a, that's what I was needing, I was needing a site-specific report. And it's interesting, it's interesting that many of Mr. Skelly's observations were made by the applicant in the last meeting, but it's good to get that from an independent expert, which we did. The, yeah, the, I'm talking about the, the report by, what is it, the company's name is GeoSoils, right. So I did want to point out that there was a lot of discussion last meeting about, or the meeting before when this last came up, about whether the Moffett report could be applicable, readily applicable to this project site, since it's so close by. And I know we went around and round on it, and I know that Mr. Skelly said, yes, it's applicable. I do want to point out though, that Moffett, the author of the report himself in that email, which was quoted, I think in full, or at least in part, in the GeoSoils report, did say that he did not think that his report was applicable to this new site, despite its proximity, because of, you know, very specific issues that made that site, the project site, different from this site. So, and I do understand that Mr. Skelly said, no, 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 I do think that it's, that in fact, the project site is even better protected from wave overtopping than, than this particular site, which is good, but I think that if I was to do it all over again, I didn't, I think it is important to get where there's a, where there's an identifiable hazard, and you're talking about a different site, just the fact that it's a stone's throw, quote-unquote, away, you know, going forward, I think it's good for the city to get a site-specific report, if at all possible. You know, I've been in this situation of having to defend, in court, trying to defend my client from arguments that, oh, you were negligent, and whatever the city can do to make itself look like it's taking all reasonable steps to make sure that, you know, they've done a thorough investigation, that goes a long way, you know, if things ever go south. And that's what we're, as a lawyer, that's what we are always trying to do, is like, oh, well, if things go south, we know how we protect ourselves. So anyway, I think it's a good thing to do, and in fact, this was great, it was fantastic, when I saw that, when I got the packet, I was like, oh, we got the report, and the report says everything's, you know, that the project site is even better protected from wave overtopping and coastal hazards than the city council site, well, it's the city council building, and I was like, oh, that's great, now we know it, now we have somebody who's actually on the record that we, that the city can rely on, reasonably rely on, to go forward, that's great, so we even have more protection than we had before. So I think we're in a better position now than we were before. And I realize that it's not fair to the applicant to be taking up the time to talk about this, but it's kind of an ancillary issue, that if it does come up again, it might be good to insist on, well, I know we have a report that's on a different site, and it's just, you know, it's, there's a lot that's analogous, but, you know, it would be, it might be good to go the extra step and say, no, 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 we really want to see something that's specific to the project site. Anyway, okay, so that's done, I'm in support of the project, I'm, I acknowledge the comments from the public that, you know, that, none of it's good news, that, you know, the sheets are, the sheets in Greenland, the sheets in Antarctica are all melting, and sea level rise is the real deal, it's horrible, but at the same time, you know, so we as a city, we're doing everything we possibly can to make sure that the buildings that do go up in the coastal zone are protected to the extent, to the extent possible, and that the city is also protected to the extent possible. So anyway, I'm comfortable with the project, I support it, and it's good to hear Commissioner Clifford give his thumbs up, because lord knows, I'm not an expert on foundations and bedrock and liquefaction and whatnot. Okay, that's it.
All right. Well, I'm, Commissioner Kraski, all right.
Yeah, I'm satisfied with the discussion here, this is for the project. Just a comment to the applicant, next time you decide to develop another site, and you do get that project approved by the Planning Commission, and you get the appropriate permits, try not to let them expire, saves us all some time.
All right, well, I'm just glad that the site-specific analysis that was required under our general plan and our rules, we got that, that was important to me, just to cross the Ts and dot the Is, and I do appreciate that the new report, you know, makes certain assumptions, and now the city has it in front of them, that's good. I think the important one is, one where they basically say that wave overtopping is unlikely, so that's good to know, from their perspective. Let's see, so Commissioner Nebelen.
Well, absent any further conversation on the matter, I'm prepared to make a motion.
Okay.
And I'm going to move that the Planning Commission find the project is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act and approve site development permit PSD 83518, coastal development permit CDP 40018, use permit UP 11018, and subdivision condominium SUB 24018 by adopting the attached resolution, including conditions of approval in Exhibit A, and incorporates all maps and testimony into the record by reference.
Okay, I'm not sure, before we get a second maybe, Commissioner Rubenstein.
I was going to second.
Oh, you were going to second?
Yeah.
All right, and I had two quick lights up here, Commissioner Cras, no, okay. Clifford, you want to say anything?
I was just going to second.
Adam, a bunch of seconds, okay, go ahead.
Yeah, I make a motion a second, the approval.
Okay, we've had a motion, a second, please vote. All right, that passes unanimously. Congratulations, you have an approved project. And anyone agreed by the action of the Planning Commission has 10 calendar days to appeal the decision in writing to the city council. Okay, on to the next public hearing, and this is for a marijuana use permit, to locate a marijuana retail operation within an existing commercial building at 403 Don D Way. The recommended action tonight is to approve as conditioned. Staff report please.
Good evening again. The item before you is the fourth marijuana use permit application to be considered by the Planning Commission under the city's cannabis business program enacted in 2017. The city's program consists of three phases of review. Phase one, a background check investigation, and phase two, a security plan review, are managed by the police department. Phase three is the marijuana use permit process and is managed by the planning department and culminates with a public hearing at the Planning Commission. Beginning in phase three, planning department staff worked closely with the police chief and his officers to carefully review this application against the requirements in the Pacifica Municipal Code, particularly those in Article 48 of Chapter Four of Title IX, known as the marijuana regulations. Under the marijuana regulations, the proposed facility is classified as a marijuana retail operation. A marijuana retail operation may sell cannabis-related products for medical, non-medical, or both medical and non-medical purposes. The application before you would be for medical and non-medical sales, as the applicant has stated in its operations plan. Marijuana retail operations are limited to marijuana operation overlay districts established by the city council. There is a citywide limit of six marijuana retail operations and a limit of two within any overlay district. The subject operation would be located within the marijuana operation Rockaway Beach Overlay District. Marijuana retail operations are further prohibited from operating within 600 feet of a K through 12 school or youth center, and 200 feet of a daycare center, which is in operation at the time of determination on the marijuana use permit. Staff has verified that the proposed operation complies with these distance requirements as of this public hearing. 403 Don D Way is an existing two-story commercial building. The site historically has had laundry, media production, auto and home supplies, security, medical chiropractor, and therapy services, according to city business licensing data. The proposed marijuana retail operation would involve the entirety of the building, with the addition of an elevator along the front facade for ADA compliance, totaling 2,060 square feet of commercial space. Other substantial facade improvements would include larger windows for added security, ingress and egress doors, and change of siding material. The applicant has proposed hours of operation of 9:00 a.m. until 9:00 p.m. These hours are consistent with what city council authorized for another marijuana retail operation, which had a residence nearby, but not immediately above it. The applicant has indicated that no more than four employees would be present on the site at any given time. And given the square footage, the proposed operation would require seven parking spaces, which will be provided onsite in an existing parking lot accessory to the building. The parking in Luffy will not be required for this project. As explained in the staff report, planning department staff believes the subject application satisfies all requirements of the marijuana regulations and should be approved as conditioned. If the commission approves the marijuana use permit and after expiration of the 10-day appeal period to city council, the police chief will confirm satisfaction of phase one background check requirements. If satisfactory, the police chief would then issue the marijuana public safety license, which is the companion approval from the police department, and the subject marijuana retail operation would be eligible to operate after satisfying all conditions of approval contained in the marijuana use permit and after obtaining, obtaining all applicable state licenses. Staff did not receive any public comment on this item prior to the hearing tonight. And to conclude, staff recommends adopting the attached resolution to approve marijuana use permit MUP-3-18, subject to conditions. That concludes my staff report, and I'm here for any questions.
Hey, any questions for staff? Okay, I don't see any right now, so I am going to ask the applicant to come up, you can speak for 10 minutes, present your project.
Good evening gentlemen and ladies, I'm Edward Gullian, we are the architectural engineering firm working on this, so I can answer any questions pertaining to that. engineering firm working on this, so I can answer any questions pertaining to that.
Okay, any questions for the applicant?
I'm also here for the applicants, and
Okay.
We're, our attorney's running a little late, so, um, but if any questions on any of the project information, I know.
I, actually, I guess my question was really more for staff, and that is, uh, obviously, having the architect here is good, but I think historically, it seems that we've had sort of the operator here to, and, and to some extent, I recognize that we're really here to think through the land use planning aspects of all this, but, um, was the applicant also here, or somebody who could speak to some of the, uh, operational components of, of the business?
How's it going? So, I'm Phil Cancel, I'm the CEO of Greenhaven.
Okay, great, and I'm not sure I have a, a specific question right now, I just, again, wanted to be sure if something came up, we, we
Okay, absolutely.
On an operational level, be able to ask questions. Thanks.
Okay, I don't see any questions for you at the moment, but stay close, might later. All right, uh, at this point, if anyone wished to comment on this, they would fill out a card and bring it up. I don't see any cards up here, I don't see any movement, so I'm going to close it, and you can come back up if you wish, let's see if there's any questions. All right, well, I'm not seeing any still, so, um, I'm just gonna, oh, wait, Commissioner Clifford, knew I had one here.
My question is actually for the chief. Chief, have you had the opportunity to, uh, review the security plan for this applicant?
Yes, Commissioner Clifford, I did review the security plan with my staff, and we approved the security plan in phase two.
Thank you very much.
Sir. Okay, Commissioner Krasky, oh, Commissioner Nebelen.
Thank you, and actually, operationally, I, I just wanted to make sure I was clear on something, I think I understand it, but, um, it looks like the proposal is to have no, no more than four staff members present on-site at any one time, was one of those four, just to be clear, a security staff member, or was it?
The security officers are third-party, so we didn't consider them staff.
Okay, so you would have no more than four staff members plus a security guard?
Plus one security guard, in the little security booth room.
Thank you. And the delivery service, uh, whomever it is that's operating, that would, would that be part of the four staff who might be present at any given time?
It could be, but we also have another delivery facility in Hayward that we might deploy drivers to Pacifica to pick up the order and fulfill the delivery, as well as possibly a staff member inside Pacifica.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, thank you. All right, I'm gonna, um, you can take a seat, and I think we're just gonna deliberate at this point, but stay close. Um, okay, back to deliberation, anybody wish to say anything? All right, Commissioner Gordon.
I wish to say something, and it's for, I think it's kind of a question, comment slash question for staff, or for any, for, or even for the chief of police, uh, thank you, by the way, for coming. Um, and, you know, I'm aware of the, the density issue where, where, where we've got, we're gonna have six MROs and a limit of two per overlay district, and so this is an overlay district, Rockaway, and, and I think we just heard, uh, another applicant, another application for a, a site right nearby, like near the, what is it, near the UPS store or something like that, in that building?
That's correct, at 450 Old County Road.
Okay, and that's like five-minute walk or less from this site?
Probably less, yes.
Something like less, and I, you know, we are in completely brand-new territory, since this hasn't been done before, and, uh, so, I just wonder if there's any thoughts about pros or cons of, of, uh, of having two, two dispensaries, well, and so the other dispensary that we approved, is that for rec and for medical, or just for medical? For both?
It's for both.
Both.
Both, so, I just wonder if there's any thoughts about what it, you know, we're gonna have two right nearby each other, I, I don't know, does that raise any concerns, or is that a good thing, because it's gonna create more competition, which is gonna lower prices and increase services, and I don't, I'm just throwing it out there for, for consideration, 'cause it, it's interesting.
Good evening, Commissioner, Senior Planner Christian Murdock. The city council, as a, a policy matter, has determined that up to two marijuana retail operations per overlay district could be appropriate, uh, under, uh, certain circumstances. The council did not provide a blanket direction to approve two per overlay district, uh, the council did enact this marijuana use permit process, so that a careful discretionary review could be conducted of the particular circumstances surrounding permitting any particular marijuana retail operation or, uh, pair of marijuana retail operations. And so, with that in mind, uh, the city's regulations further have a finding that requires the commission to determine that the particular arrangement and proximity and size and characteristics of the proposed marijuana retail operations would not be likely to adversely impact the neighborhood. So the commission has discretion if there are particular aspects of, you know, the number or proximity to one another of the marijuana retail operations, should it find that to be concerning. Um, staff in its analysis, uh, in conjunction with the police chief, has not identified any such circumstances, but we're here to answer questions or provide information about any matters that may concern the commission, and I'll just, uh, add as well that the commission has already approved two, or rather, the city council on appeal has approved two marijuana retail operations, again, in relatively close proximity within the Sharp Park Overlay District. And so this would not be unprecedented to have two authorized in the same overlay district.
Thanks, can I, I'll ask a quick question, so we've got two, this would be the second one that's approved in Rockaway, is that correct?
That's right. Uh, well, to qualify that by saying, um, as you'll hear later, the commission's approval at the last meeting has been appealed to the city council, and so that approval is not yet final.
Okay, but if it's, if, if that one meets the city council, if that one survives the appeal, we'll have two in Rockaway that have been approved, planning commission through the process, and then there's a, what, is there seaweed, is that still open?
That is a business in the Rockaway Beach neighborhood, it's not a marijuana retail operation per the city's definition. That business operator has applied and is on the lottery list to conduct and to operate a marijuana retail operation, but they're not currently eligible due to the numerical limitations, uh, if both of these are approved. If this application is disapproved, or if the other application, uh, is denied on appeal, uh, then there may be a possibility for seaweed's application to be considered.
And I, I would like to mention through the chair that, uh, city staff has received direction from city council at a recent study session to, uh, bring to the planning commission for consideration, recommendation of amendments to the marijuana regulations to, um, uh, one of them would be to consider allowing three within certain overlay districts, so allowing three businesses. So, uh, that is not germane to this hearing tonight, obviously, those are not adopted regulations, but, um, just because you're asking about the, the number, I thought it would be good to let you know that.
Thank you, much appreciated. Um, just, uh, well, I'm gonna make a request, and then I don't want anyone else to chime in, I hope, but on seaw, on seaweed, if it does come before us, I really would, I don't know, efforts have been made by the city or, or the police chief to shut it down, or bring code enforcement, or anything like that, um, but to the extent that any of that's occurred, I don't want to see that in the package that comes before us, if possible, since it is public record, I don't know, police chief, you have, thank you for coming today.
Good to be here.
I never get a chance to tell you that, you always leave before I get a chance, but any remarks on, on, oh, no, you know, actually, I don't want you to talk about that. So I'm gonna just end that discussion right there, but I just, just a request, and, um, onward, before I get in any more trouble, Commissioner Nebelen.
I just had a, a question, and I think it sort of dovetails some of the conversation we're having here about, uh, you know, proximity of one potential dispensary to another, and really kind of curious about, you know, given, you know, I spend time down in Rockaway, but I, I'm trying to get a sense of what's the maximum distance these, you know, realistically, these, uh, operations could be located from each other in, in sort of best of circumstance, I mean, 350 feet, that's about, I don't know, it's more than a football field, so, I could probably walk that unless in five minutes, I don't know, but, um, I, I'm sort of curious about what's the maximum you could, you know, from a densification perspective, how, how far could you realistically spread these things out anyway, in that particular overlay district?
Probably not very far apart.
Yeah.
Rockaway Beach District is very condensed, and so, um, to use, you know, the seaweed operation as an example, should that application ever move forward, it's almost sort of smack dab between these two, and so, they would really essentially run the length of Rockaway Beach in many respects, and so, I don't think you're likely to get a great, um, lateral or horizontal separation from these, uh, given the, the layout and the nature of the commercial activities taking place in Rockaway as of today.
Thank you, and, and, and just to, to the police chief again, thank you, and I'll, I'll add my voice to that for, for coming, I mean, just in terms of sort of enforcement and monitoring, are there benefits to having things somewhat co-located or somewhat proximate in, in terms of the work you've got to do?
Well, there can be, it just depends on whether, when or both of them become problems or not. Um, you know, again, um, we, we have the staff available that'll be able to monitor them. Um, in terms of, uh, having two in that location, our ability to monitor them both, I don't have any concerns.
Thank you.
All right, uh, well, Commissioner Clifford, I'm gonna brush your light here in one second, but I just wanted to note that the applicant is, uh, here and available probably to ask any questions, uh, answer any questions if we have him. Commissioner Clifford?
Well, I did want to note that we did get, receive an email from Carly Gar, uh, who is concerned about having, uh, more than one in the area, uh, you know, based on, uh, traffic and parking and so on and so forth. Uh, I wanted to acknowledge that we got that email, uh, and I, I also, I, I, I actually don't have any particular concerns about this operation, it's in a, it's in its own building, it's two stories, the whole building is going to be dedicated to the, to the business, it's got its own parking, it's, I, I think of all of the ones we've seen, this is probably the best one that's come forward, so, that's where I'm at right now.
Thank you, Commissioner Rubenstein.
Yeah, I think I'd like to hear a little bit more from the applicant in terms of the operation, before I'd be comfortable proceeding, just seems like there's a, a lack of clarity, just, I'm sure you can, you can fix.
Yeah, uh, I think it's okay to have the applicant, uh, take, I think we barely used a couple minutes, right, so, go ahead, and you can present your project now.
I will, well, thank you for, uh, allowing us to come here, I've worked with Helen and some of the others, it's been a very professional, uh, experience. Uh, I do have a very extensive, long cannabis background, and I believe it is being well thought out, uh, is my opinion, and I appreciate it. Um, you know, we're looking forward to doing it, I think that, as Councilman Clifford, uh, pointed out, I, I think that it, this is a very ideal spot, um, the way it's structured with the parking, um, with the renovations that we're gonna do to the building, I think it'll be a very attractive building, uh, and I think it's very well-suited, uh, the way we have built our understanding and our ethos of our, uh, approach to doing it, it's gonna be very high-scale, um, and it's, uh, you know, we, we are believers in the industry beyond the economics, uh, you know, we believe that it is a good thing for the economy, uh, we believe it's a good thing for the people. So, uh, we, we look forward to doing it, we look forward to working with everyone here, uh, it's been nothing but professional, it's been our experience, and, you know, we're open to any comments, uh, that you may have.
Thank you, uh, any questions for the applicant? Commissioner Rubenstein?
Yeah, just maybe some more specifics around your, your comments about ethos and your vision for the business, what's it gonna look like, you know, how's it gonna operate?
Here's what we fundamentally believe, we, we believe that this plant's been with us for tens of millions of years, there's phenomenal doctors, uh, around the country, around the world, this is a worldwide movement, it's not something that's just happening here in California, it's happening everywhere. Um, UCLA's Cannabis Commission that was set up by the, uh, medical, uh, department there is showing incredible things, uh, the research is coming out all over the world, so we're gonna follow those roots, uh, that, those are our roots, we're going to bring in brands, uh, the very best that, uh, that's offered here and around the country in license deals to, uh, provide real scientific approach to doing it and using it beyond the recreational, uh, use. Uh, even on the recreational use, I think there'll be great innovation there. Uh, we want to be innovative, we want to work with the very best, uh, and bring it here, and I think we're very well, uh, located to San Francisco, to the other places that we can bring in, uh, some of, uh, the innovations that we plan on doing, you know, to the people outside of Pacifica, through home delivery, uh, which I think is a very exciting part of the business, it's part of this whole Amazon Now, Bring It To Me, uh, thing that's going on, it's been big in California for a long time in this industry, I think it'll only grow, we plan on being a part of that, that tax revenue will generate here. Um, and, you know, we, uh, you know, we're gonna do good business, you know, we're gonna be business people, you know, provide very good service, you know, we believe in elite service, and that's what brings the people here. You know, to, uh, respond, I think it wa, was, uh, Councilman Clifford that brought it up, is the density, you know, how much density can we handle, and I've spoken to Helen about this a little, uh, you know, it is a small area, uh, I think that, uh, we know the other applicant, we plan on being very cooperative with them, uh, we have talked about how we can develop the industry to help bring a healthy, uh, you know, participation from, uh, you know, the community here, as well as our outreach through home delivery to other places, that can be very, uh, very positive. I think at some level, you know, that, uh, having more locations doesn't necessarily mean a, you know, a bigger, you know, economic impact, I think, I think two is the right number, you know, and I don't wanna get off the track here, but, you know, I, I think we need to see how this is gonna develop, I think that Pacifica's uniquely geographically located, that we gotta see, are we gonna be able to bring some of the outside, the community area here to participate in what we're doing, we'll have to see how that works, uh, I'm optimistic, but we'll have to see. Uh, and I think that a cooperation of two is great, you know, I think it's great. Um, and we look forward to working to the, with, with the company below us, you know, down south as well, uh, to see how it, it does, I mean, I think that it is a very good industry that's got very long legs, that will do very well, there's enough room for more than one, uh, and we can all cooperate and try to bring a very professional, high-level, you know, operations, uh, that we all grow with together, uh, is a healthy thing for the community, and, you know, we look forward to doing that. Um, so I would say, you know, to, to focus more on your question more directly, you know, we, we believe that cannabis comes out of the medicinal, uh, world, we believe that's our true, uh, roots, you know, we look to bring health insurance to our employees, we look to bring, uh, higher than a, um, minimum wage to our, you know, base employee staff, we look to bring everyone up, we look to educate people to, you know, help them develop themselves, you know, within the Pacifica operation as well as beyond, give them the ability to move up. So, you know, we're very excited about, about this, uh, area, and, you know, we, we look to, to help everyone, you know, it, it's, we think it's good business.
Okay, uh, let's see, thank you, um, Commissioner Gordon?
Thank you, sir, thanks for coming, uh, so, Greenhaven, so are you guys operating other dispensaries, or is this the, this is the?
Well, our, our lineage is in the industry, we are not operating now, uh, you know, since the, the grandfathering out of the collective law, as of January 10th, we, we shut down, uh, we do not actively participate right now, we're waiting on licensing, and, you know, we're committed to do it the right way, and we, uh, we have, you know, implemented policies within the company to do that.
Are you seeking, do you, are you, is the idea to open up dispensaries in other locations in California?
Well, we are, we are permitted in Hayward, uh, we are looking, uh, in Oakland, uh, you know, it is an operation that has a lot of industry, nationwide industry expertise that's available to it, uh, we, we see the Bay Area is one of the great markets for cannabis in the country, so, uh, obviously, it's attracting a lot of talent, it's attracting a lot of resources, and, you know, we are going to do it in a way that it is going to be pretty responsibly done, uh, there's a lot of people that, uh, that we are in discussions with beyond purely, you know, economics, but licensing of their products wherever they may be, uh, that, uh, you know, it's economics, but licensing of their products wherever they may be, that, you know, it's, you know, we're gonna bring a lot of professionalism that we've learned from around the country, you know, to the operations here.
So, does Greenhaven have a footprint outside of California?
You know, I'm an attorney that's been in the industry for three years, I'm a principal here, I'm one of the, not the majority shareholder, but I'm the CFO, general counsel, I'm very involved, but I'm very involved all around the country, you know, I speak around the country, you know, with some of the, you know, the elite groups that are getting involved. You know, we have access to a phenomenal amount of resources, technology, products, so yeah, we're gonna bring them all here, and we're gonna really, people are excited about Pacifica.
I'm sorry, so did you say that, so that, do you operate any dispensaries outside of California?
Greenhaven does not, and, and it's, a lot of it's based upon the federal rules that, you know, the cross-border interstate commerce issues that we can't do, so, you know, but, we're very cooperative with companies all across the country.
I see, I see. Do you, or do you have affiliated entities that operate in other states?
Oh, yes, yes, Massachusetts, Pennsylvania, Maryland, Michigan, you know, you name, name a state, we probably have a connection to it that's fairly significant.
When you say connection, you mean you have a, there's an affiliated entity?
No economic equity ownership, and that's a very straight-up, that's no like, oh, we're very creative, you know, legally. We are a standalone, very small company, but we do have the access to companies that can give us a lot of insight on how to do it, we look to best practices wherever we find them, and we're able to tap into it, but, but we are a small standalone. Phil, who is here, is the CFO. CEO, we started this a couple years ago, he was expert in the business. Through the vape manufacturing business for seven or eight years, very successful company that came out of San Francisco and the Bay Area here, he was the COO there, he broke out to do his, to start a collective under the 215 or SB 420 law, and developed a lot of the expertise of it, he hired me as a lawyer, we spent time together, I saw that he was authentic, and we, I decided to come on board, I am not paid, have not been paid in this company for over two years, and I'm excited about it.
That's not legal.
I'm hearing you.
As your attorney...
You're, you're a good man. But I am excited.
Thank you very much.
I am excited about it, it's gonna be done very well, I can tell you, it's gonna be done very well.
All right, thank you very much. Commissioner Nebelen?
It wasn't me.
Oh.
It was me.
Oh, that was an old light, okay, sorry, gotta turn that off. Well, actually, since we had you present, I'm going to go ahead and open up the public comment for another, give everyone another opportunity to comment if they wish, if you, anybody out there did wish to comment, you could fill out one of these cards, bring it up to staff, you'd have three minutes to speak, but I don't anticipate that occurring, so I'm gonna close the public comment again, and I am going to bring us back to deliberation, stay close, and we're just gonna deliberate this now. Thank you.
Hey, thank you.
All right, Commissioner Gordon?
Sure, are there any other comments from the commissioners? I'm ready to make a motion. Okay, I'm not seeing anyone, so, I move that the planning commission finds a project exempt from CEQA, approves marijuana use permit MUP 318 by adopting the resolution included as attachment A to the staff report included in conditions of approval and exhibit A to the resolution and incorporates all maps, the applicant's MUP application and all attachments and testimony into the record by reference.
Commissioner Clifford?
I would second that motion.
All right, we've had a motion, second please vote. All right, that passes unanimously. Congratulations, you have an approved project.
Hey, thank you, we're gonna be a good corporate citizens here. We look forward to being here.
Thank you.
All right.
Anyone agreed by the actions of the planning commission has 10 calendar days to appeal the decision in writing to the city council. All right, onward, and, let's see, onward. Commissioned Communications, anybody, anybody? I had a question for staff, and that would be the, any progress on the specific plan for Pedro Point?
Yes, somewhat. So, only, only that I can report that I did bring that, as well as the request to study the Rockaway parking district fee, to the city manager, and we're working on putting that on the, the list of items for the council's consideration on March 9th, which is when they'll have their, their goal-setting session.
All right, great, thank you. Anyone else? I don't see any others, okay. Staff Communications?
So, I also wanted to report, as you heard earlier, that 450 Old County Road, the marijuana use permit for that site was appealed, and it will be heard tentatively by the city council on the 25th. We have another planning commission meeting in between, so we'll be asking for a liaison for that meeting at the, at the next regular planning commission meeting. And on the 25th as well, we'll be bringing an update on the library project and the community outreach that we've done, as well as preliminary conceptual drawings for the two facilities.
I had a question for you, Tina, sorry to interrupt. How many MROs have we approved?
How many what?
How many marijuana retail establishments have we approved?
With this one, it's four.
Four, and how many have been appealed out of those four?
Three.
So, every one that we've approved has been appealed?
Yes.
By different appellant?
The first two by Mr. Zollinger, so the same appellant, and this last one, I believe it's a Mr. Stark.
Correct. Okay. I'm just curious, are they competing establish, are they...
This last appeal was, mentioned concern about the parking in the Rockaway District, and the first two, I don't know if there was a clear reason for the appeal, which it, I don't think we, we have to have one, but do you recall?
Sure, the appellant for the first two in Sharp Park was the next individual on the lottery list for Sharp Park, but that was not stated as one of the bases for appeal, and those were enumerated in the reports that were prepared for council.
Thank you very much.
Great, thanks.
And then I was, I was actually gonna mention, we've already mentioned this, that in March, draft revisions to the cannabis regulations will be, being brought to the planning commission for recommendation and consideration, as well as updates to the ADU ordinance to be in compliance with recent state law changes.
Great, thank you. All right, well, we've reached that time. All right, Commissioner Nebelen?
I'll move that we adjourn.
Commissioner Clifford?
I'll second that.
All right, we've had a motion, second please vote. All right, thank you, the meeting's over, good night.